Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 7, 2016 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Sean Heider?
Here.
Alderman Waldeck?
Here.
Alderman Beidler?
Alderman Pendeliana is absent.
Alderman Newman?
Here.
Alderman Tack?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Adelman?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us tonight. First item on the agenda this evening is comments by mayor. I have two items. The first is a resolution of sympathy for former alderman Henry Tuttle Chandler, and I'd like to read that if I could. Whereas on behalf of the city of Lake Forest, the city council expresses its sadness at the profound loss of Henry Tuttle Chandler on February 19, 2016, and whereas Harry Chandler served as Third Ward Alderman for the city of Lake Forest from 1994 to 2000, at which time he served as a member of the Central Business Task Force, the Compensation Personnel Administration Committee, the Senior Housing Committee, and whereas prior to being elected Alderman, Harry served the city of Lake Forest as liaison to the Library Board, as administrative liaison and member of the Plan Commission, Cemetery Commission, Senior Resources Commission, Cultural Affairs Commission, and whereas Harry was a lifelong and valued resident of Lake Forest, a former student of the Bell School and the Gorton School, graduating from Yale University and Harvard Business School, and whereas Harry Chandler served on a destroyer as an ensign in the U.S. Navy during World War II, followed by a 34-year career with the Quaker Oates Company, and whereas Harry was dedicated to community service, working with the Boy Scouts, the YMCA, the Nature Conservancy of Illinois, the Field Museum, and the Alliance for the Great Lakes, and whereas Harry cared deeply about Lake Forest and maintaining its character and quality for future generations, and demonstrated his commitment and passion through his support for preservation of open space, natural resources, and significant architecture in the community, and whereas Harry Chandler enjoyed adventure and the outdoors, boating, hunting, skiing, and he especially enjoyed spending time with his family, and whereas Harry was a beloved husband to Clarissa Hafner Chandler, father to children Laura, Edward, Phoebe, and the late Henry, grandfather to Grace, Edward, Thomas, Adele, Charlotte, and loving brother to Bruce and the late Kent, and whereas Harry Tuttle Chandler was a kind and gracious man who deeply loved his family, his community, and fellow residents. His contributions to Lake Forest were significant, and he will truly be missed. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest, it hereby expresses its deepest sympathy to his family and that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to the family of Harry Chandler with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the March 7, 2016 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. I'd like a motion to approve the resolution, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously approved. I have one last item on my agenda. Reminder that there is early voting going on here, right, at City Hall, from 9:00 to 5:00 during the week and 9:00 to 2:00 on the weekends, and I only know that because I voted on Saturday. So please, if you get a chance, and sure is easy, just come in and cast your ballot, and it happens right here at City Hall. Those are all my comments by mayor. Next item on the agenda, comments by city manager Bob Kiley.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's community spotlight is a unique one, and while it doesn't necessarily apply directly to the city, it's sort of related, and I'll tell you why. Because back in 2012, Susan Kelsey, our Economic Development Coordinator, started an incubator program out of three cubicles at Gorton Community Center. That then grew to, I think there's 125 businesses that are operating now out of Bennett Hall, and that also helped start programs at Lake Forest College, Lake Forest High School, and then most recently, the county of Lake has started an incubator program that Susan has helped put together as well. The high school's got a really fun and unique program, and this evening we're going to hear about the winners from last year's, from when I understand program. If you've watched the Shark Tank television show, it was sort of a Shark Tank program, but it went from an idea that has become a reality and something that each and every one of you can actually purchase if you want. So this evening we have teacher Joe Pulillo. Pulillo, thank you, Joe, and from the Business Education Department, and he's here to present a couple of fine young students and what they've put together for us. So Joe?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Joe Pulillo, and I'm the crazy teacher that started the incubator at Lake Forest High School. I don't want to waste a lot of time because I want to focus to be on the students, but I will tell you, it's been an incredible experience. I mean, I've been teaching over 20 years, and bringing the community into the classroom has just been unbelievable. A couple highlights for this year. I have with me students from last year who received $20,000 and are running a business out of my class. This year we have some really exciting stuff. Some of you may have seen. We have a group that is creating a product. It's called CEO Secure, and one of our students, Isabella Fontanini's, grandparents passed away in Highland Park because they left their car running. They had here it was an automatic car. So she came in the class, and we have a group right now that has come up with this really incredible idea of how to figure out if the cars continue to run in the garage and to trigger your garage door and also send a message to your phone. They've been on WGN television. We've gone down to the radio station. It's just been an incredible thing. But in the meantime, some of the exciting news is we've got so much publicity that now we've got Aero Electronics, which is about a Fortune 150 company, that's approached us and asked that they can work with us and with them the development of it. So now I've developed a relationship with them. And I'm just going crazy. Susan's been awesome. She's helping get my students connected, and it's an incredible program. And I welcome all of you to stop by anytime you want. I would recommend the kids would be really excited. But tonight at High School Hire, they were awarded $20,000 last year, and they're running a company out of my classroom, so I'm going to give it to them and I'll speak with you. Thanks.
Hi, my name is William Perez.
I'm Michael Yanuchy.
And I'm Luke Powers. And we're at High School Hire. So we just wanted to start off by thanking you guys for letting us take the time to talk about what we've been working on this year and what we developed last year, and we're really excited. We're excited what we've done.
So Mr. Pulillo talked a little bit about the first year of the class. It goes through its launch of innovation, forming ideas, and working with people within the community. So as we said last year, we received $20,000 in seed funding to work on our idea in our second year. So in year two of Innovation Incubator, we're working on the development of our idea. We incorporated as a company in the state of Illinois, and we're working to scale across the North Shore.
So what is High School Hire? If you think about monster.com, applied to the teenage job finding process, and that's what you'll get. We wanted to develop a place where businesses could go to post a job and where teenagers could go to find jobs all in one place. Think about it, a teenager going to every single store and picking out an application and filling it out and coming back. It's quite a time-consuming process, and in this day and age, we're so swamped as teenagers with sports and college applications and stuff. It's really a hard press to find the time. We created one application that applies to all the jobs that a student can apply for from the website, so they can apply to multiple jobs while only filling out a single application. The way that we charge businesses is that we have a three-tier pricing model. The first price is $75, where the business can post for three months. We just send all the applications we get. We sort of act as a middleman. The second pricing model is $100, where we go through and we find applicants that have the criteria that the business is looking for, and we send them a small pool of applicants. And then the last model is a direct recruiting service where they give us a set criteria, and we find one applicant that matches all the criteria and give it to them.
I think I just turned it on. Okay.
So over the summer, we got our funding going into the summer. We incorporated as an LLC and are officially recognized in Illinois as a business. We also continued working with past clients that we worked with over the school year last year, such as Denati's, Suzy Swirls, and Mercedes-Benz out in Northbrook.
So the first quarter, a large chunk of the time was spending finding a web developer. We realized that we were kind of in and over our heads trying to develop it ourselves, and once the portfolios and the proposals and the quotes kept coming in from web developers, we were a little overwhelmed because we realized we hadn't really ventured into this water yet. So it took a lot of time to find a web developer that kind of matched up our ideology of what the website should look like and functionality. And then we developed a sales playbook for how we approach different types of businesses.
And we decided on WebLinks, who was based in western Illinois.
So quarter two, we had to do a lot of the foundation for our business. We worked with Web Financial Group out of Lake Forest to nail down our insurance. We got basic business insurance and air and emission for $1,000, so that was nice. We worked with a lawyer in the town named Mrs. Rockwell, who helped us file for a trademark for our logo and name and helped us copyright our one app, so that led us to protect our intellectual property so no one could steal our idea. We worked a lot on our marketing as a focus in our quarter two. We've been doing presentations all around the community to different clubs like the Rotary Club, Lions Club, Lake Bluff City Council here, and we downloaded a QuickBooks account, and we're self-accounting. So we worked with one of our investors, Mrs. Brandell, to help learn about that. And we received our website in our second quarter and began doing a soft launch of that.
So moving forward into quarters three and four, we've been really working on marketing, again, going across and doing as many presentations as we can. We've launched our website. We have three posts on there right now, and we're also working into including volunteer opportunities with any volunteer organizations around the community, just to post on our website.
And we've been working heavily with the Chamber of Commerce. So Mrs. Rolak has really helped us to, she actually afforded us with a free membership to the Chamber, so we have access to their entire database, and she's been sending out flyers for us to all the 450 businesses in there. So our users and customers, we launched our website about a month ago, and so far we've had 33 candidate accounts created on our website. We've had 12 employers create accounts, which included the Lake Bluff Rec Center, the Lake Forest Rec Center, and even the Glencoe Rec Center, which was awesome to see. We had 10 resumes created, which means 10 applications were actually sent out to businesses. And then we currently have three job listings on the websites from Lake Bluff Park District for lifeguards, swim instructors, concession, Suzy Swirls, and NSSRA, which is a special recreation center out of the North Shore.
So when we started thinking about what we wanted on our website, we realized that our website was not only our website, it was our product. And so we really wanted to create something that reflected our status as a startup and made us look professional and clean-cut. So right away, we saw models, and there's a website called wayup.com, which kind of has a similar model as us except for college kids. And then we really liked the layout of monster.com as well. So as Michael is showing, when you log on, you see a list of jobs that she can apply for, and then if she presses View Details, the Lake Bluff Park District did a really nice job, kind of giving a huge description, a very nice description, and it lists the salary, hours per week, and then you can either bookmark this job. So the idea is that if we have a lot of jobs on the website, instead of sorting back through it again, you can just bookmark it, come back to it later and apply, rather than having to go through and take the time. This is our one app. So again, you only have to fill this out once. And we added a few key questions in there that kind of just cut to the chase and show the business what they really want to see. So one of our key questions is straight away, why should we hire you? A lot of businesses tend to ask questions that kind of dance around that question. We just try and cut right to it. All of this application has been approved by the businesses that we've worked with last spring and the Chamber of Commerce. So that's...
And then this is what the business, oh wait, one second. So this is what the business would end up receiving after the application has been sent. So they receive everything digitally, and it has all your information just laid out right here, which we think is a super simplified way rather than receiving the hundreds of paper applications. And right away, you can contact the candidate by email, and when it's on the mobile application, you can tap the reference numbers and call them straight from your phone. So we think we kind of took out all the difficult parts of finding teenage employees and finding jobs for teenagers. So yeah, that's basically what we have.
Once again, thank you so much for letting us present. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
So how do you make your money, from the companies or from the candidates?
From the businesses.
So how do you sell, how do you contact the companies? How do you handle your selling a part of it?
So we've been working a lot within the community by presenting to different organizations and clubs and things like that to reach business people. And as I mentioned, we have a membership with the Chamber of Commerce, which is kind of our biggest outlet to reach the businesses. Once the website goes a little bit more viral, there's a way to check out on the website. So we're working with our bank right now to put in like the shopping cart tool, but they can just post a job, press the shopping cart, and pay for it right on the site. So that kind of allows the legitimacy of the jobs to stay true, and people can just post from anywhere, basically. And then there's a zip code, so you can type in where you're located to find your closest shop.
Do you do any cold calling on potential businesses in the area?
Yeah.
And who does that?
All three of us. We feel that we're all strong speakers, and we all can portray our passion for this, and I feel like that's probably one of the most important things that businesses want to see.
What Mr. Reisenberg didn't tell you was he's a human resources expert, so.
And a recruiter. Yeah, so if you guys aren't doing anything after you finish this, I'll give you my number afterwards. If that's okay, you could probably add a little bit of professionalism to what I do.
So I have a question. What was your biggest challenge in getting this started?
Probably timing. So we, at the beginning of the year, we wrote out all our goals we had with a date next to them. And as we got into the year, we realized that finding the web designer took longer than expected, which kind of pushed back the marketing and getting the insurance and things like that. So it's been working with others and timing everything up correctly, but other than that, we've pretty much gone at it.
I've got a logistical question. I hope it doesn't get too personal, but I'm not sure if you mentioned, or if you mentioned what year in school you are, but at some point you'll graduate.
Yeah.
That's kind of the elephant in the room.
Never mind.
No, no, we're very...
We have to deal with enough of those. We don't want to do that.
We all have intentions and plans on going to colleges, but unfortunately, those colleges seem to be spread out across the United States.
Seniors now.
Yeah, we're seniors now.
So one of the things that we're toying with is that what we can do, they've done this at other schools, is I teach the first year, and sometimes kids that don't get funded that are really good at this, they will hire and put into the second-year program so they can go off to college and have three or four kids run their company out of my classroom as seniors. So that's one idea. They could sell a business off. There's a lot of things they could do.
It's largely automated online, so while it's nice having each other to talk about and everything, we can do a lot of the work over the phone and through the website itself. So we're working on a couple different plans with our investors and us three to figure out what we're going to do.
Any other questions? Mike?
It's one of the best community spotlights I've ever enjoyed.
Yeah, to a degree. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Joe. Thanks for coming.
I appreciate it. Lake Forest has been incredible. If you can see how my classroom has been changed. I have well over, our foundation has well over 20, 30, 40 people that come in my room. We think I'm mentors. It is an incredible program. And I'm going to Las Vegas to present to the nation over spring break, so I'm really excited. We couldn't have done it without this community. So I really appreciate it.
Terrific. Well, thanks for all you do for the kids.
Thank you so much, and we'll leave our business cards right here.
There we go. Cold calling, Jack.
Well, and the only thing I learned this evening is that based on Alderman Adelman's comments, anybody who does a spotlight needs to bring in high school students to make the spotlight. So that completes my report this evening.
Thanks, Bob, very much. Next item on the agenda, number three, comments by council members. Public Works Committee approval of the stormwater management policy presented by Public Works Committee Chairman Alderman Waldeck.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. That's a tough act to follow, but I will speak for a few minutes about stormwater management. We actually have three public works items on the agenda, and I'm going to try to roll through those fairly quickly, but I will spend a little bit more time on the first one, which is approval of the stormwater management policy. This is the first time that you, as a council, has seen this policy, but as you can see from your agenda notes, the Public Works Committee has been discussing this for some time. And the genesis of this really is we all receive calls from constituents regarding water and their water issues, water in their yards, water in their basements, sometimes even water in the streets. And we've always had a policy for dealing with that, but we thought it would be a good idea to have, to really sort of codify that, put it into writing, have a written policy, have a document that people can turn to, both staff and residents. So the purpose was really threefold. First of all, to define the city and property owners' stormwater management responsibilities. And in doing so, I think it's important to note that we are guided by certain laws and ordinances, one being the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance, which provides regulations for development, and the second being the Illinois Drainage Law, which specifically outlines what property owners can and cannot do with respect to stormwater management. And at the suggestion of Alderman Moreno, links to both of those, both the Watershed Development Ordinance and the Illinois Drainage Law is included in this document. We want to make it as easy as possible for people to reference those laws and ordinances, which we're all bound by. The second purpose is to provide a process for property owners to investigate flooding concerns. And I don't know if people know this, but the engineering department of the city, as well as the water and sewer guys, are always more than happy to come out free of charge, look at people's situations in their backyards, in their homes, offer advice. That's something that we've always done and something that we will always continue to do. But we wanted to really set out the process for dealing with these issues and investigating and resolving these issues, whether it be the city's responsibility, which it is in some cases, or the private property owner's responsibility. And finally, and lastly, we wanted to provide a process for stormwater projects to be included in the annual CIP. We've had a number of those projects come in front of us lately, so that was really the third goal of this stormwater management policy. Now, I'm going to pass off to Vic for just a moment here. There is one aspect of the stormwater management policy that we need to change, and that is really the part of the policy that deals with city staff providing a list of references for various plumbers or engineers who can come out and resolve these issues. And Vic, I'm going to ask you to speak to that for a moment.
Certainly. Thank you, Alderman Waldeck. Six weeks ago, the Illinois Supreme Court rendered a decision that materially changed some of the basic laws of duty and tort liability for municipalities. Not entirely clear how all of this applies to different elements of what the city does, but certainly one of the things that we have long been protected against is if we make an effort, as an effort, to enhance the public well-being, we don't assume any kind of duty and therefore don't have any potential liability. Well, the Supreme Court has changed its mind on that, and the no-good-deed-go-son-punished rule becomes a little more palpable for the city. With respect to offering recommendations as to third parties, where that would have been a good deed in the past, it may be something that is punishable in the future if our recommendation turns sour. And so I've suggested that we make some adjustments to the policy to be reflective of that new law, and something that frankly I haven't fully processed as to how best we can do it, but there may be ways of accomplishing this through links where we're not making any kind of recommendation. We're just providing information, and people can make their own evaluations. But I think that's something that we're going to need to look at a little more closely before we go full bore on this new policy, so that we don't inadvertently find ourselves running into problems because we're trying to do good by others.
And obviously, the goal is, and always has been, to provide as much help as we can, as much assistance, as many resources as possible for residents who are struggling with these issues. So you know, it's one thing to say, this is your issue that you need to fix. It's not something the city is responsible for, but we certainly want to be as helpful as possible. So that's just something we'll have to look at more carefully. It's our intention, if you approve of this document, to make it available on the city's website, to get the word out through other methods, to help make the public aware that it's a tool that they can use. So any questions?
I haven't.
Comments?
So the guidelines or the statutes for stormwater management, when we as a council, let's say, for example, look at a Whole Foods, that nine-acre site, and the drainage issues over there, is that a framework for us? I mean, does that help us fine-tune our perspectives on what we have to consider with respect to not only zoning and density and setbacks and whatnot, but how to deal with water removal from impervious sites like a Whole Foods development over there?
I'm not sure I really, I'm not sure I follow.
If I might offer a perspective on that. Any development that comes forward does have to go through review under the Stormwater Management Ordinance. It's applicable throughout the county. We do have local enforcement capabilities because we are a certified community. So yes, as to all of those, I think this policy is related not only to new development, but existing development where people have potential drainage problems and won't really be triggering the Stormwater Management Ordinance. Stormwater Management Ordinance has some exempted areas, and you know, a small addition to a house may be unaffected by the ordinance, but may still have an impact on stormwater management. So I think that the policy is trying to not only be reflective of what the law is, but trying to fill some gaps where the law wouldn't necessarily apply. Illinois Drainage Law is a little bit different in terms of its applicability. It's more prohibitory as to what you can't do in terms of changing drainage and what you can do for self-help purposes in order to maintain natural flow of drainage. Stormwater management is much different in that it is designed to provide for offsetting impacts of development on the overall drainage system. So they operate a little bit differently, but they do operate cohesively.
I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So is this going to alter our perspective or sharpen our focus, let's say, when we try and solve issues on bowling green, for example, or was this in place before?
I think that this is not something that's going to be changing what the city does in its review process. We already have ordinances and statutes that govern that. This is more a matter of how the city can help people where they're not subject to permitting requirements under those laws.
I mean, Mike, we always had a process. We always had a stormwater management policy. It was not a written policy, but there was always, you know, certain rules that we followed. I mean, I've had a number of calls from residents over the years who are frustrated about water in their backyard or, you know, the flow of water traversing through their property. And it is frustrating, and it's difficult, and we are bound by certain laws and ordinances in the Illinois Drainage Act. You know, it pretty much says you have to accept what comes your way. And so we want to make people aware of what our responsibilities are as a city, what we can take responsibility... are as a city, what we can take responsibility for, what we can do, and what's incumbent upon the private homeowner. But we also, the other piece of it is, we really do want to try to help people in, solve these problems, and not just walk away and say, it's your problem to solve, but to give them whatever resources we can and whatever help we can to try to come up with a solution. So, I hope that answers your question. It's not a new policy, it's just a written policy.
Any questions for Kathy?
If I may, I view this as our objective of raising awareness, collecting, and being a repository for residents of something they can turn to. To your point, Kathy, that it's written, but it's perhaps more extensive also, and I'm hoping that that's, that will be useful to all of us.
Anything else?
Anything else?
If not, I'd ask for a motion to recommend from the Public Works Committee the approval of the proposed stormwater management policy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, request approval to both participate in Lake County's rock salt bid and waive the formal bidding process to purchase salt for the winter of 2016, 2017. This item is presented by Michael Thomas, Director of Public Works. Michael, good evening.
I think Michael's going to pass me.
He's going to punt it to Alderman Waldeck.
But he's going to actually assist me with, we have a few slides prepared. We're going to go through this rather quickly because this is all good news. Slide number one, which Michael's going to show you in just a moment, is a comparison of the salt that we used this winter season to the two previous winters. And you can see by this slide that a combination of a light winter, so a little help from Mother Nature, and our reduced salting policy, which we've had in effect now, I guess, for the last two years, has left us with a number, quite a bit of salt on our hands, actually. And you can see we used 1,000 tons this year compared to 1,600 the year before and 3,500 the year before that. If you want to turn to the next slide, Mike, this slide estimates our end-of-winter inventory at 900 tons. And it sort of outlines, in a way, what we're asking for, what we're seeking from city council today. As you may remember, we are purchasing 500 tons, we will be purchasing 500 tons through a previously approved purchase order. So, that is something that we will be doing shortly. We are asking also for approval to purchase an additional 1,000 tons through the Lake County bidding process, and in addition to that, to negotiate with multiple salt vendors and purchase another 1,000 tons prior to the, to next winter. And, yeah, there it is. And really, we now, because of the salt bays that we've expanded, have the capacity to store an additional 800 tons of salt. So, what this really allows us to do is to sort of hedge the market, and we anticipate that the salt companies will be looking to get rid of old inventories of salt this summer, and before the new inventories come in. And that puts us in a position where we can take possession of the salt right away and take advantage of competitive pricing. So, that's what we're looking for, and that is the action that we're requesting from you tonight. Any questions?
Questions of Kathy or Michael?
Mike.
I have a question. Does salt deteriorate in its effectiveness after some period of time? So, to Kathy's point, we'd be buying old salt. Is that bad?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay.
Works the same regardless.
Just cheaper.
Just cheaper.
That's good.
Right.
Any other questions? If not, I'd ask the council to approve, actually, for a motion to approve the participation in Lake County's rock salt bid and purchase 1,000 tons from the vendor at a price determined by bid, and also request approval for staff to negotiate salt pricing for up to another 1,000 tons to be delivered before the winter 2016, and both the Public Works, give both the Public Works Committee Chairman and the Mayor the right to approve such purchase before an order is placed by the staff.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much.
And lastly, no slides for this one. We're seeking approval of the IMS pavement management study for FY 2017. This should look familiar to all of you. It comes up every three years and is included in our CIP. The IMS pavement management study assists the Public Works Department in determining which streets should be resurfaced. We will also be evaluating the pavement condition of the city-owned parking lot. So, if, are there any questions regarding the IMS pavement management study? Otherwise, we'll be seeking council approval.
Okay. Ask for a motion to approve an acknowledged exception noted in Section 8.5D1 of the city's purchasing directive and award of contract IMS to perform a structural analysis on the city's entire network of streets, selected parking lots, where not to exceed amount of $72,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Anyone care to address this evening the council on a non-agenda item? Yes, come on up. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Condon. I'm from, live at 721 Valley Road, and I have three high school students at the Lake Forest High School. I'm here tonight to speak to you about my concern about Starbucks being allowed to serve alcohol.
Ma'am, could I, I'm not going to interrupt you, but this is, that's an item on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
So, we would love to have you come up, but I'm going to slide you just for a few minutes later, if that's okay.
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 Yep, I'll have to have the papers.
No, that's great. We want to hear it. Anyone else? All right, next item on the agenda, items for omnibus vote consideration. There are 11. If any member of the council wants to take any of them individually, we'll do so. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to approve at the end. Item number one, approval of the February 16, 2016 city council meeting minutes. Number two, approval of the check register for period January 23rd to February 26th, 2016. Number three, approval of a resolution opposing any attempt by the state of Illinois to reduce, withhold, or redirect municipal revenues.
Don, can I ask a question about that? Just, or would I have to pull it, we have to pull it out?
Why don't you let me read the list, Prue, and then I'll have you go at the end. How's that? Number four, approval of a tentative agreement on wages with the local chapter of the Metropolitan Police. Approval number five, approval of a corporate resolution for credit card services. Number six, award of a contract with Interdev to purchase hardware and services for replacement firewalls as budgeted in the FY 16 capital plan. Number seven, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Number eight, consideration of ratification of expenses related to the installation and maintenance of security fencing at the former municipal services site. Approval of a motion. Number nine, award of a bid for the City of Lake Forest portion of the 2016 concrete pavement patching contract. Number 10, award of the bid for the City of Lake Forest portion of the joint 2016 asphalt patching program. And number 11, award of the bid for the Cities of Lake Forest portion of the joint 2016 resurfacing program. Alderman, you had a question?
I, yeah. Bob, I think this would just be for you. On this resolution opposing any attempt by the state of Illinois to reduce, withhold, or redirect municipal revenues, I'm delighted that we're doing that. I'm assuming we're in good company with some other municipalities doing the same thing, hopefully like all in the state.
Well, I can't say all, but
But many.
The Village of Hoffman Estates approved this about 30 days ago and was presented at the most recent Northwest Municipal Conference meeting. So, the conference, at the request of the Board of Directors, sent this out to all its member municipality. So, I'm anticipating all the members in the Northwest Municipal Conference will approve it.
Okay.
Good.
I have a question.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Does this have any, I'm sure my terminology is incorrect, but does this have any real legal standing?
No.
Okay, that's, okay, fine. Maybe I shouldn't even.
It's really more of a public position by the council.
Fine. Okay, I'm okay with that, of course.
A little confused. Okay.
That's all.
Yeah, I probably shouldn't even have said anything, actually, but, yeah.
No, it's fine. Okay.
Two questions. The first is item two, the check register, the $54,000 to the housing trust. I'm just curious what that is. Are those funds passing through from some developer paying a deed and lieu? Do we periodically make payments into the housing trust?
We only make payments into the housing trust when we make a payment for a house that has been renovated and we've made a contribution. I don't know if that was
You know what that $54,000, what its origins are?
Estate landhouse.
An estate landhouse.
Okay, that was number one. And then, on item 11, on the asphalt paving program, this question's for Mike Thomas. I see Old Mill Road, or Paddock Lane is in there, from Old Mill to the cul-de-sac. And I know it was, the road was built 20 years ago. Is 20 years about par for a
Yes.
Street like that? That's pretty good, isn't it?
It is good. Yeah, the developer did a nice job.
That's because Kathy Cerniak made us.
But, yes, a residential street like that, 20 years, 15 to 20 is good. So, 20 years is actually at the upper end.
Well, great. That's all.
Thanks. Anyone else? Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the omnibus.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, item six is ordinances. Consideration of an ordinance amending the City of Lake Forest liquor code, creation of a new class and number of licenses, Section 111.037. And this is, first reading is presented by Attorney Philippini. And before Attorney Philippini makes his comments, I did want to say that this is also on the agenda this evening, so we can do two things. There was some discussion at the last council meeting about the liquor license that the council approved for Starbucks. It has not been issued, and there was a lot, some discussion amongst members of the council of wanting to kind of engage in some dialogue about that. And so tonight's an opportunity for us to do that. Number two, it's also an opportunity, as we'll know, to hear from some residents and get some input from them about perhaps a bigger issue of liquor licenses as a whole. I think the city council is interested in getting feedback on that as well. And then, I think we've, we have determined that we will more than likely make some modifications to the Starbucks license as well. But before we go into that, I'll ask Vic to go ahead and make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Several years ago, when the city reviewed its liquor code, we did an overhaul and reduced the number of available liquor classes from, I believe it was somewhere like 26 to about 12. And so, that consolidation eliminated some of the refinements between different types of licenses. Among the things that happened was a number of licensed categories, which had both full liquor versus beer and wine service, were consolidated and made them all full liquor. Reason for that was both the lack of subscription to certain of the beer and wine licenses, and also some revenue considerations, as well as simplifying the ordinances. When the Starbucks proposal came before the council recently, the presentation was that they were looking to do only beer and wine service. The classifications, however, that were available to them under the current license only provided for full liquor service, as opposed to just beer and wine. Upon further consideration of this after the council's action, there was some discussion that it would be appropriate to revisit this issue and perhaps create a specific license category that would only be beer and wine, consistent with what the proposal from Starbucks was. Before you tonight, there was at your place, it was not in the packet, a draft ordinance that effectively did three things. One, it created a new Class C4 license. That Class C4 license would be just like a C1 for a restaurant and the like, but it would only be for beer and wine, not for all alcoholic liquor. Two, it also made the outdoor license consistent with whatever the underlying license is. That way, if a, an establishment got an outdoor license and it had full liquor, they could do full liquor outside. If it only had beer and wine, it could only do beer and wine outside. Second, we have in the draft ordinance proposal to eliminate the C1 license that was approved at your recent meeting, that was intended for Starbucks, and instead created a new Class C4 license, which would accommodate the Starbucks proposal. And the third thing would be to create a fee for that. The fee that is in the draft ordinance is for $1,500. That is a number that was selected, looking at, we have still some beer and wine licenses in the packaged good area, and we did a comparison of what the differential was in the packaged good side, and tried to have a comparable differential in the on-premises side. And the difference is, if I recall, 2,600 to 20, to 1,500, which is comparable to how we have the license fees in the packaged good license category. One issue that is not reflected in this draft, and I apologize that I missed an email along the way, but it was pointed out to me this afternoon, is that there was a desire to limit the hours of operation of the liquor license category. Under our current code, for outdoor licenses, the liquor license, or the local liquor commissioner is authorized to establish any limitations on hours. We don't have a similar authorization of the local liquor commissioner for the indoor service. And what I would suggest is that in the provision regarding the Class C4 license, we simply add a clause that would say, but, that those licenses would be only available during such hours as prescribed in the liquor license issued by the local liquor commissioner. So, we would have some discretion on the part of the liquor commissioner, and it would be reflective, presumably, of what the intentions were of the council, excuse me, and the licensed applicant when they, when they appear before the council. So, that's what is before you tonight for first reading. Excuse me, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Questions for Vic? You know, just as a reminder, the city has no available liquor licenses. Every liquor license that is issued by the city and, and the liquor commissioner, which is the mayor, is considered individually, on its merits, on its worth, and certainly on the issues associated with it. So, one of the things, just for everyone to be aware, that there aren't available licenses floating around out there. Each individual license is issued for a particular petitioner. And then, if for some reason those licenses or those operations go out of business or move out of town, that license goes away. It's not left out there and left open for someone else to fill it. So, I think it's important, as we have whatever discussion we're going to have this evening, to remember that each of the new licenses that are granted in the community, no matter what, are given proper consideration and are brought before the council for discussion. Any comments before I open it up for public comments?
Just a quick clarification. In terms of the liquor license, that's the Starbucks liquor license, what are the hours that beer and wine would be allowed to be served?
Yeah, well, the what, can we, can I address that?
Please do. This was going to be the policy aspect that was suggested with the additional language I meant.
You know, after we had our meeting a couple of weeks ago, I received a lot of phone calls from the community. I've got, I spoke with Andy Duran, I spoke with others about the appropriateness of selling beer and wine at Starbucks, even heard from my 15-year-old daughter. And so, we did a little checking. Biddy checked as well. And so, I think originally their plan was to offer it from 12 o'clock on. And we're, our plan now is we're going to modify the request and allow them to sell only after 5:00, seven days a week. It's the exact same policy they have in Winnetka. I think it, while it may not be perfect in some people's mind, I think it accomplishes what I think I'd like to accomplish, and what I think is good for the community, which is creating a window where kids are coming back from school, they're using Starbucks as a place to study, hang out, see their friends, and it allows a window where there still is not liquor being served.
Have you had any conversations with your counterparts in Winnetka with the mayor or city manager and anyone there to see how that's been working out there?
I have spoken briefly with someone on the council in Winnetka, and it's kind of been a non-issue. So.
Okay.
Do we have any sense of, I know Starbucks, or I've read Starbucks is expanding this concept. Do we know where they, broadly, where they, how many perhaps they've brought? And have they met any resistance or any restrictions in other communities?
I don't know the answer to the second part, Jack. I know based upon the comments that the Starbucks representative made two weeks ago, number one is, they're rolling it out and they rolled it out in about 50 locations. But what I thought was also-
In Illinois, I think it was.
In metropolitan Chicago.
Okay.
Metropolitan, 15 metropolitan Chicago?
But what I also found very interesting was their comment that beer and wine sales only accounted for approximately 1% of their total sales volume in each store. So, you know, I think the prospect that it would turn into a Blantyne or Market House or something like that also is, I think is limited as well.
How did the individual feel about this and restricting it to 5:00? I mean, did he feel strongly? Was it, well, you whatever?
Individual from Starbucks?
Yes.
They were certainly willing to go along with it, and they did mention Winnetka as another example of someone that-
So it's kind of like, what's the big deal? It's not 5:00?
I'm sure they'd like to sell earlier.
Not that big a revenue here.
But from our perspective, that's what I think made the most sense.
Okay.
What was that last comment, please?
Any feedback from Starbucks?
I actually thought we were, I thought it was, that we talked about it in the context of it starting at 5:00 and going from 5:00 to 9:00 or something like that.
I think we said 4:00.
Well, whatever it was, I don't remember noon ever.
There wasn't a, there wasn't a definitive time proof set on it.
Okay, okay.
And so as we stepped back, we took a look at it, Vic and Biddy and Bob and I met last week. And based upon that, and based upon some of the feedback I'd gotten from the community, we said, look, let's pick a date. Let's pick a time.
Are there other establishments that fall under the similar type of license? I'm thinking of the sandwich shop that used to be in the space Starbucks is going into, is now over in the arcade. I think they serve wine, maybe beer.
Certainly beer.
Would they be into the same category?
I understand that they actually have a packaged goods license, so that's a different category. Theoretically, there may be other locations either currently or in the future that could seek the same type of approval. But as the mayor noted, the way we handle this, they would have to come first to the council and ask for an amendment to the number of licenses, and that would be a way for the council to do some initial vetting of the issue.
That was the wine and cheese shop, right? That's what you're referring to, Tim?
Right.
Yeah. I know for sure they sold wine there. I don't know if it was for consumption, but certainly they sold beer for consumption there all day. Actually, my son, he was in high school, worked there, yeah.
I don't think they still have package, though. They've downsized considerably.
Well, you know, I was about to say, as far as I was concerned, they ruined the whole concept when they, but I've already said a couple of things tonight, maybe I shouldn't have said, so I'm not going to say that.
I guess my only, my only comment for the council, and then I want to, because there are people here that would like to give us some of their input as well, is just, you know, Alderman Adelman specifically mentioned, you know, what happens if Jimmy Johns comes and wants to sell beer with their sandwiches. You know, we don't necessarily have to come to a great decision tonight or have any closure to it. But I think as we get more, perhaps more of those situations that we're confronted with, we probably need to think more about kind of what our, I wouldn't call it a policy, but what our approach is and what our stance is on it. You know, I think it's good that we treat each individual application separately. But I think it was an opportunity for night, if there's any member of the council that would like to just voice an opinion about it, now would be an appropriate time.
Before public testimony?
Yes.
I would. I mean, I think more and more we're moving to a coffee shop, kind of European coffee shop concept. So, you know, for adults having a glass of wine while they're reading a book at 3:00 in the afternoon or 2:00 in the afternoon or over lunch, to me, is perfectly acceptable. And I think having young adults come and go at the same time, the way they did at the wine and cheese shop, is perfectly acceptable. Is there some, I mean, I'm sure we're going to hear tonight that some people just think it's a terrible concept. Myself personally, I don't. I just don't. I think it's a, I think it's fine. And it's certainly not inappropriate in my mind. And I'm not even concerned about the 5:00. If that's what everybody wants to do, I'm certainly willing to go along with that. I mean, noon, to me, is like, what's the big deal? But that's just one man's opinion.
Michelle?
I would echo Jack's comments, however. I'm not a parent, and I do think of Lake Forest as very much a family community. So I will listen very closely to what a parent would think. But there are some other things that I think about when I think about alcohol licenses. One is certainly is time constraints, start time, end time, but also the locale, whether there's a perimeter or barrier that drinks don't go beyond. So outdoor front seating at a Starbucks, typically there's no barrier. And that concerns me because it might be too easy to pass alcohol out beyond some line that's not well marked. I also think of types. So we talked about beer and wine as a subset of alcohol. I think about food availability. I mean, I grew up with alcohol in my household from an early age. Italians think of it like water, I suppose. But we always ate when we were drinking. I mean, it wasn't that we sat around and drank. It was at mealtime. So I think food is an important element, especially in a family environment. I think about sporting and entertainment. I think about the lake as a risk factor, so I'm not in favor of alcohol at the lake, lakefront or on the beach. And I think about lighting. I think lighting is a very important consideration because bright lights, I think, I'll use the word offset, perhaps an environment that might be more like a club or bar. So I think that there are other factors that could be part of a global policy, if you will, or approach. And I think I'll stop there. I think that's broadly what I think about.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah. As you all know, except maybe Jack, I was the sole vote against this. And I'd like to clarify that a little bit, and all under the veil of what Vic told us, and that is, a liquor license isn't a legal right, it's a privilege that the commissioner exercises. You know, my objection at our last meeting on this was multifold. It was, first of all, because we really gave it so little attention after the previous liquor license for the Shell station came before us, and we gave it a lot of resistance. So it just troubled me on its face. The council here didn't take the time to really think it through and deliberate on it. So that was one of my problems. And secondly, and understand this, I'm not opposed conceptually to a Starbucks having a liquor license for beer and wine. And Lord knows, I like beer, I like wine, I like hard liquor. I'm an adult and I enjoy it. And I'm, so I'm not a teetotaler, and it's not a moral issue for me, but it just kind of took me by surprise. It's a coffee house. And I don't think of coffee houses, other than maybe in Europe, which you could be more familiar with, Jack, than I am. I don't think of coffee houses as serving liquor. And their comment about the 1% of sales, anybody who's underwritten hospitality industry knows, all the profit is in the liquid. It's in the beverage. The food's a push. They make their money, they make an enormous amount of money with coffee, obviously, because we're paying $4 or $5 for a fancy coffee that costs them pennies to make. And alcohol's pretty similar. There's big profit margin there. So they say they're going to, it's 1% of sales, it's a lot of profit margin. Having said that, I'd like to see some sort of uniformity. If we grant this kind of liquor license to Starbucks here, how could we ever say no when the request comes up for the Starbucks over on Waugiegan Road? I don't see how you could say no to one and yes to the other. And if you do, it's like, okay, this is a very subjective ordinance. Subjective is not good. Objective is good. Someone should be able to look at the ordinance and see if they have a fair shot at getting approval for it. And if it's strictly at the, at the will or whim of the mayor, of the commissioner, who gets bestowed a liquor license and who doesn't, I don't think that makes us look good. So those are really my concerns, that there should be a uniform basis by which we consider giving liquor licenses. And I'm not opposed, per se, to granting this one. It's just if we grant this, then I'm going to be prepared to grant others. Because I think that's the fair thing to do. We have to be fair about it, not selective.
Mike, just to clarify, I mean, so you understand, in my role as liquor commissioner, I do take the cue and the lead from the council. So I'm not going to make a unilateral decision about who does and who doesn't get a license. So to your point, I mean, if we need to create more uniformity and structure to how we issue that, again, why we're having the discussion tonight. But I would, I would never envision my role or anyone's future sitting in this chair's role of unilaterally making decisions about liquor licenses.
And I didn't mean it to be construed that way. I don't want the council as an entity to be thought of as selectively bestowing liquor license, selectively bestowing a privilege. Whether it's a variance for a residence or whatever, there's, we should try and be as objective as possible whenever, and not look like we're doing favors for those who we think are deserving, and we don't do it for others.
I understand. Any other comments, Prue?
Well, a couple of things. I would just say, actually, Alderman Moreno, I think you listed exactly, I think the point, Alderman Adelman, your point about trying to be objective, I think is a really excellent one. And fairness is something I know that's all on our minds quite constantly in this role. But I also think having things written down, and that's something, Michelle, that you brought to us and more, I mean, I noticed in the sewer thing, you suggested that we make it easy for people to find in that document, to find the regulations that exist. And you've done that on a number of occasions, and I applaud you for that. You just gave us six things that we should consider, you know, including lighting. And I hadn't thought before about the whole barrier thing. So I think we had talked before about the possibility of there being tables outside and not just behind. I think it's a really good point. I think probably outside and front might not be ideal for exactly the reason that you talk about. So I think you already offered us a list that might be, might be to the point of adding some objectification to making decisions that could be incredibly useful. Part of the reason that I was pretty, I mean, we did have a discussion about it before, and I was comfortable with my vote, which was for it, was because we were talking about later in the day, and it seemed like an appropriate time. You know, everyone, most adults have their, who do partake in alcohol, have their own ideas about the appropriate time to start. And sometimes we make jokes about it's 5:00 somewhere and so on. But mostly, we understand that there is an appropriate time. And it might be at lunch sometimes. But we have a sense of kind of what works. But somebody learning about alcohol, it doesn't always have the same idea. So I was partly reassured, very reassured, actually, by the fact that this isn't a new model with us. This was happening other places. When the guy said there were 50 of them in the area, I was like, okay. So this is, you know, let's, we've got a model here. And I was very reassured when I asked the question at the last, at this last meeting, of the man representing Starbucks. You know, I basically said, I assume there's specific protocols about training people for what's, what's an appropriate use of alcohol. Since clearly, that's not an issue with coffee. I mean, you know, people can get jazzed on too much coffee, but I don't believe an intervention is usually necessary. And they apparently have very deliberate and careful protocols and special training that's required and so on. So that was reassuring to me, that they don't, they aren't just treating this as, yeah, yet one more arm of the business. You know, like, I mean, they were taking this seriously. They understood that there were some hazards that they needed to be aware of. So that said, I'm anxious to hear what people say tonight. And I do think that we've amplified our discussion before. I really feel strongly, I think, if we've got some things we can write down that would make it seem easier for us next time to say, okay, here's what you do. Look at this list. Here's what, here's what works, here's what doesn't. This is how we decided with Starbucks and so on. And I think you're absolutely right. The Starbucks on the Waugiegan Road would have every right to come to us and say, here's why we want it. And we would have to take that pretty seriously, I think.
Prue, just to piggyback on Prue's comments, and one of the other things that we talked about last time when the Starbucks representative was here, and we did have this discussion, and I welcome a broader discussion. And Mike, I think the points that you raised last time are excellent, and I'm glad that you repeated them today. But the representative, as I understand, to tell us that, you know, the focus is not on serving wine and serving beer. That is not the focus of Starbucks. It's not going to be the focus of Starbucks. This is not a bar. If anything, they're trying to expand their dinner menu and encourage people to come there and eat dinner, much as people come there and eat lunch, and offering this is more of an amenity. So that made sense to me. And it was comforting to me to know that this is not, probably not a place where somebody's going to go if somebody wants to have a beer. That's, they're probably not going to choose Starbucks. They're probably going to go to one of the other establishments in town where you can sit at a bar and have a drink. And so this is more of an ancillary type of service that they're, that they're offering.
Tim?
Regarding Alderman Adelman's comments, I sort of am hesitant to get too structured in codifying regulations around the granting of liquor licenses. I think part of the whole thing is to remain flexible as society evolves, tastes evolve, things change. We certainly have a lot of tradition in this town, but I think we have to remain flexible. And I'm more comfortable with a case-by-case approach.
I would just like to second that. Uniformity isn't always good. And in a situation like this, I mean, who would have anticipated Starbucks opened coffee shops? You just, you just wouldn't have. So I mean, I'm, I would rather have a case-by-case basis where you can drill down, rather than have a horizontal thing about, does it fit? Yes, it fits this, you know, this, or it doesn't fit, even though it makes, it makes a lot of sense because it's creative and innovative. So I think the approach we're doing right now is great. Just like, boom, does it work? Does it make sense? Yes. No. Boom. I mean, Waugiegan, does it make sense? No. I think somebody said the other day, or last, I wasn't at the, two weeks ago, Jimmy Johns. I think Mike said, somebody told me, Mike said Jimmy Johns. I said, what are you nuts? You know, I mean, you kind of know, you know, just come on. Let's look at this thing, let's take a rifle shot rather than use a shotgun on these. That's my opinion.
Okay.
So I'd like to agree with that, that I think that we need to have the flexibility to look at changing business models and how the culture evolves. I have absolutely no issues with Starbucks business model serving wine and beer, and I have no issue with them serving it, starting at 11:30 in the morning, if they have a lunch business, because I think that's reasonable. We have other places where people come and have beer and wine with lunch that are insignificantly different than Starbucks. And the fact that people of multiple age groups show up at Starbucks, to me, is not an argument against this. I would point out that I have been in numerous restaurants in the city that have bars where children sit at the bar. And they're family restaurants, and we don't have a problem. I thought that that was actually against an ordinance, but it seems to be fairly well tolerated in town. I certainly have no issues with children sitting in a Starbucks and seeing somebody drinking a beer. I don't see the negative moral impact of that. So for me, I like the idea of being flexible, looking at the business model, does it make sense? I don't like the issue of micromanaging things like lighting. And I think this is a very reasonable business model.
Any other comments?
Yep.
Yep.
Just in light of the last three commenters, I'd just like to say, this is good because you're doing the drill down. I don't think that was done last time.
And I think that was the reason it's on the agenda tonight, not just specifically for Starbucks, and we certainly want to talk about that as well. But I think I would agree, Mike. We just didn't engage in- agree, Mike. We just didn't engage in enough discussion. We didn't talk about the topic in general. You know, I've heard from some of you over the last few days about how strongly you feel, particularly about alcohol at the beach. And I would, candidly, would share exactly that same feeling. But, above and beyond that, I think every individual situation, as Randy said, is, has its own merits and its own drawbacks, and I think it's always worth council consideration. I'd like to take a few minutes and ask if anyone from the public, and we know one woman is here to do so, if you want to come up, who wants to make any comments this evening, I'd ask, again, name, address, and if you could, please know more than three minutes, and hopefully less.
This is kind of like Groundhog Day. My name is Chris Condon, and I live at 721 Valley Road. I have three teenagers at Lake Forest High School. So, as you know, I'm here to talk about my concerns with Starbucks serving alcohol. In our community, specifically the Market Square location, it's used as a social hangout, and a place for, where students go and do homework, and work together as groups. We have middle school students and high school students that are in there regularly. The middle school students are frequently downtown until four, 4:30, sometimes five o'clock. High school students stop by after school, after sports, and after club meetings end. Which puts students in and out of Starbucks until at least 6:00 PM, sometimes 7:00. Additionally, many high school students use Starbucks in the evenings as a place to do homework and work together as groups. And for example, I didn't know they were going to be here, the Business Incubator class that our community is so proud of, and you all were very impressed with tonight, they are required to meet once, once a week with their groups outside of school. And, um, they use Starbucks regularly. They use Starbucks on the weeknights to work as groups. They use it on Saturday after, Sunday afternoons, Sunday evenings. They meet there with their mentors, and they meet there as a group. I estimate that Market Square use sales are definitely more than 1% of Starbucks sales that they have. Why is it important that we allow there to be some alcohol-free places in our community? The reason it's important is that the solutions to substance use and to substance problems is found when you take a relationship and interaction of individuals that they have with their environment. So, for example, the health risk of smoking became clear in 1964. A lot of education took place to try to stop people from smoking. No real change occurred in smoking rates until strategies were implemented to change the settings where smoking came together with the individuals and their environment. Smoke-free airplanes started the whole thing. It led to smoke-free workplaces and clean-air laws. Change in public policy that separated individuals from smokers has done more to decrease the number of smokers than education about the harms. Education was necessary, so individuals had some basis to understand why the public policies were needed. But real changes were made when smoking and people came together, and where the changes happened on where those two came together. In 2014, the rates of alcohol use by youth in our community, as measured by the Illinois Youth Survey, was 41% among high school females and 37% among males. Among 12th grade students, 74% reported using alcohol in the past year. There is no denying, the youth in our community are consuming alcohol at alarming rates. If the community wants to truly impact these rates, we have to consider the environment in which we are raising our youth, and how alcohol and youth are brought together or separated in order to prevent, to help our youth. I love that Starbucks is an alcohol-free business, serving youth and adults. I think it's healthy for kids to see adults socializing and hanging out together without alcohol being involved. Starbucks provides that to our community. It's one of the few places that does. Our community also provides plenty of places for adults to get a drink together. Do we really need to take away one of the few alcohol-free choices that they have for hanging out together? I think we need more choices and examples in our community for kids to be free from alcohol. I'd also add that the same example of the environment affecting substance use should be considered as the city considers adding sip and shop events. Do we really need to model for our kids that we now need alcohol to shop? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Condon. Again, I'll, I'll ask, this is not just a discussion tonight about Starbucks. It's more about a bigger platform, bigger policy, and bigger considerations for the council. But your comments are important, and thank you. Andy?
Thank you. Andy Duran, I actually live in Lake Bluff, so thanks for letting me be here. But I do run. I'm the executive director of Lead, based here in Lake Forest. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for the discussion this evening. Really, this is what I wanted to see, is coming here and just having a further, deeper discussion about this issue that we think is so important. As Chris just mentioned, we do have an underage drinking problem here in Lake Forest. The rates she mentioned are alarming, but consider those have come down significantly over the past two and three years. So we're on the right track. And I think it's moments like this that help us stay on that right track. I'd also like to commend the council for the creation of that special C4 license. I think that's a really forward-thinking way to try to balance both sides. I know this is a difficult conversation. I also thank you Mayor Sean Heider for, for considering the movement of service. I know when we spoke, 4:00 PM was a concern, 5:00 PM is better. I'd still like to see that closer to 6:00 or 7:00, because if you go into that Starbucks after school on a weekday, it's filled with middle school students and some high school students. And as Chris mentioned, it is the, one of the only hangout places in town that's still youth-friendly and alcohol-free. I don't have a problem with the concept personally. I am not a tea total. I like beer and wine. I don't have a problem with that at all. But what I do have a problem with, and working here with youth as long as I have, having them have a safe place that's alcohol-free is incredibly important, helping them to make the continued healthy decisions we want them to see. I think the bigger issue here is, is the discussion you guys are having, not so much about the Starbucks. That's, that's well and good. The discussion is what's next. To your point, Councilman Adelman, Jimmy John's, okay. Maybe Jimmy John's comes in and applies for a license, maybe they don't. I think the question is what's next. For 150 years, we didn't allow gas stations to have liquor licenses. Now they have one. For the course of our time, we've never had coffee houses allowed to have a liquor license. Now there's one. So I think our question is what's next. Having a discussion like this helps that. But I am concerned about, about having a place that's youth-friendly, alcohol-free, now being taken away from the youth and the message that sends. I think this is more about sending a message than it is about enforcing any sort of, of policy or putting, you know, barriers on a business. I think this is more about having the opportunity as a city and as a council to send a message to students that, yes, we value the decisions you're making, and this is one way we're going to support that the best we can. So I encourage whatever, wherever decision you make, we certainly support. I know you've, you've compromised already, but I would appreciate, you know, just some further discussion about where that might go, you know, and so that we can continue to discuss this as things arise. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy. And I, I would say that it's good news to hear the alcohol consumption by teenagers and young people in the community has gone down. And you and Lead have had a tremendous impact on that. So on behalf of the community, thank you. Yes, sir.
My turn?
Your turn.
I'm ready. Bob Pepscwazy, 172 Washington Road. I was in business in town here for the last 60 years, and I've lived here for 70 years. I don't think it's right to put kids around liquor. I don't care where it is. They're going to get to it soon enough. But to put in a coffee shop where these kids go in, starting as babies, and see, see people drinking coffee, and somebody else drinking drinks, it's, this is starting as precedent. And I think, I don't think it's right. I don't know, excuse me, I also don't think it's right for these big corporations to come in and take away business from a couple little guys in town, like the chief and the lantern and stuff like that, who are having a tough time the way it is. They don't need a conglomerate to come in and give them a shot with liquor in their places. I don't see them going out selling donuts, so I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair at all. I, I think the, we're losing too many things that are right. You know, you give everybody guns, people die. You go to a gas station and buy a beer, you're going to go in a car, and you're going to drive, and you're going to, it's not right. It shouldn't happen. I'm against it 100%. I, I, you all have kids. Put yourself in their shoes and see what they think about. I just hope you're strong enough to, you know, don't, don't let Starbucks push you around. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pepscwazy. Anyone else?
Yep.
Hi, my name's Deb Fisher. I'm a resident of Lake Bluff, but I'm president of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce in Lake Forest. I'm also a Realtor in Lake Forest, and I'm also a mother of a high school student. So I kind of wear several hats in this situation. I really, I just want to share with you some feedback that we have from varying different audiences within town and such. So, and it kind of also starts with the bigger picture, because we are, as Realtors certainly, and therefore as part of the Chamber of Commerce, we're trying to look at what it is we do in our town to create family-friendly events, to create adult events, to create a sense of vibrancy throughout the community, and what those need to look like going forward. So, that's the conversation that we are having. Sometimes it does touch upon, can we have a beer tent someplace? Ideas were raised that have happened in other communities, as Chris alluded to, a sip and shop. Those are not for discussion today, per se, but that's the kind of things that we're hearing from our members, from, frankly, from residents, saying, why do I need to go to Libertyville to do more exciting things, or something like that? So, so I just want to kind of share that, where that's coming from. But, um, one thing that we do, you know, one thing that people have said is that they, no one expects, no one that we've talked to or that I've heard from seems to expect that this, that Starbucks serving alcohol is going to be a big business. And yet, it does. The items that we've heard would be that it is a place for people to come, to come into town, to create more foot traffic. It's not a sports bar. You don't really have to make the choice of going someplace to drink. You're in an environment where a group of people can get together. Some are drinking coffee. Some are dining. Some are having wine. But it's not like you're committing to, I have to go to a bar and sit in a bar. A lot of moms have discussed the fact that they get together sometimes during the day, because the kids are at school, and they'd like a glass of wine. So I'm, again, relaying to you information that we've heard from people. And, um, a question was raised about consistency. Lake Forest Wine and Cheese Shop apparently does, I believe, serve glasses of wine. So, that was just raised as if that was an environment. Again, people are considering this kind of an affordable casual, consider Starbucks to be an affordable casual kind of place. And they asked about the consistency of that. And I did frankly talk to my son about it. He's, you know, he's been very involved in anti-drug, anti-youth things. He's worked with Andy and Chris and various groups at the high school, has then taken it to the middle school and talked about all this. And I said, okay, what happens if Starbucks does start serving wine? How do you feel about that? And he said, Mom, I don't see it making a difference. He said, if somebody next to me is drinking a glass of wine, it's not going to impact me. And he was the one who raised the fact that he thought that, you know, the management there, if some, if there was some issue, that the management would be trained to take care of it. So, I'm just sharing those things. And again, I think that as a, as a community, we'd like to have a discussion, and the Realtors certainly will be spearheading one, in terms of just additional things that we can be doing, not alcohol, per se, related, but events, and how does alcohol fit into those mixes. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else? I think someone mentioned, I think tonight's comments were good. In fact, I thought they were very good. I thought tonight was the reason we wanted to open this up for discussion, and we wanted to get some community involvement as well. What's on the agenda tonight is simply a change in the structure of the ordinance, right, Vic? Is that correct? It's not a Starbucks-specific item. And if I'm, if I'm not correct, Starbucks has not yet applied for a liquor license. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have, if this were adopted, which is not up for consideration finally tonight, if this were adopted, it would make an accommodation for that type of application to proceed.
One of the questions, I think, Kathy, you may have asked, or someone may have asked, is have I spoken with other mayors? You know, I might have to take the next couple of weeks and try to do that. I might reach out to a couple of my peers and counterparts in other communities and have a conversation with them as well. I think it's an important issue, and I think it's worth making a smart decision about. So, I think it would be prudent if we were to go ahead and pass first reading, assuming the council's in favor of this. Mike?
Can I just make a few more comments in, in the context of the public comments that were made? And I'll be as brief as I can. Chris Condon had some really excellent points to make. And I guess my response is a counter to the good points that she made. And that is, there, there is a problem with our teenagers drinking alcohol. It's, it's a big problem. And I think the first stopgap is in our homes. The example that we parents set for our kids. You know, I'll be known to have a beer with my dinner, and my wife a glass of wine. We're not abusive of the privilege. And we don't always. We have family barbecues where adults are drinking alcoholic beverages and the kids aren't. A lot of us belong to country clubs where the adults can have an alcoholic beverage if they're choosing. The children don't. We have laws. It's illegal to drink under the age of 21, or to be served under the age of 21. So, notwithstanding all the good comments that were made, I'm not opposed, I, I don't have a concern about kids walking into Starbucks, or Francesca's, or The Grill, or Onwensia, or Exmoor, or Conway, and seeing adults consuming alcohol when they're not allowed to. That's not the origin of the problem that our youth have. It begins at home with the examples that we set for our kids. So, I'm glad that we've had the conversation tonight that we have, and we just have to continue to do that in the future when these permits come up for consideration.
Well said. Anyone else? If not, I would ask for a motion to consider amending the liquor license code of the City of Lake Forest, creation of a new class, and number of licenses, section 111 dot oh thirty-seven. This is first reading. Do I have a motion? So moved. I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing not passed unanimously. Thank you, and thank you to each of you. Next item on the agenda, ordinances affecting code amendments, consideration of an ordinance amending code, section 51 point 060 relating to the customer classes for water and sewer charges. This is first reading, presented by Elizabeth Halb, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The ordinance presented for consideration this evening is for first reading. It would impact chapter 51 of the city code in which water utility provisions are provided. In chapter 51, customers are divided into three customer classes, small, medium, and large, based on the size of their water meter. Those customer classes are then used to determine the fixed water charge per quarter that is assessed to the customers. We recently had a situation where a single-family residence was required to install a six-inch meter. That was primarily due to the fact that, of the proximity of the house from public fire hydrants, required for fire protection, the installation of a private fire hydrant for the residence. The homeowner paid for the six-inch meter at a substantial cost. However, it was the first occasion of a single-family residence being included in the large customer class, and therefore assessed a very significant quarterly fixed fee. Rather than requesting a specific property waiver, what is suggested by this ordinance is that the classes remain the same, but that any single-family residence in Lake Forest would be capped at the medium class. So that if for some particular reason not related to water usage, the single-family residence is put into the large class, it would not be assessed the large fixed water fee. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, this is for first reading, and would come back for final approval at a subsequent meeting.
I have a question for you. So, if the house in question had a fire, and we connected to their private fire hydrant and put out their fire, who pays for the water?
The, the private fire hydrant is not connected to their, to their account.
In this specific case, the water meter is after the hydrant. So it's a six-inch line coming in. It's got a very long driveway to a hydrant. After the hydrant, then, is the, the six-inch meter. So, to answer your question, very similar to any other hydrant in town, the city pays for that water.
So, wasn't there a step down in the side, size of the water supply to the house, and the meter was based on the water supply from the hydrant to the house?
Correct.
Well, then, wasn't it just a misapplication of, of the requirement for meter size?
It was, it went into a six, at some point, I'm sure it's, it is reduced going into their household. But for us to track the, the water correctly through that six-inch main, the meter was installed after the hydrant, which it should have been. It's installed correctly. It's installed correctly. But at some point, I'm sure it is stepped down into the home. I don't know that for, Kathy is saying yes. They don't have a six-inch service going into their home. It is stepped down. But the meter was installed on that private service line, not in their home, where it is a, you know, inch and a half, or two-inch, whatever it might be. So, very similar to a meter pit, for example. Twenty-five percent of our water service lines have meter pits in town, where the actual, there's a pit actually in the parkway in the right-of-way, and the meter is actually in the pit. It's the same exact concept. The meter is outside in front, in this case, close to that six-inch line, or part of the six-inch line.
Hey, Mike, how come we didn't pull the six-inch meter and just put a remote one-and-a-half-inch meter in the basement of the house?
I'm not sure. On this one, I'm not sure why that, that didn't occur. At some point, Alderman, tack is correct. I'm sure it is stepped down in size into the home. Again, an inch and a half for a two-inch service for that size home is normal. But, for some reason, the meter was decided to be put on the line outside, similar to a pit meter.
Yeah, just because it just seems to me like this is such an aberration, and that there was something wrong in the way this was put together and metered, that this, to change ordinances to, you know, the thing that should be changed is what happened there. There should have been a one-and-a-half-inch, you know, pipe with a meter on it, and there should have been charged for that instead of, I mean, now, you could say, "Well," but then they could sort of rework this thing and put a six-inch pipe into the house and have one heck of a shower, but, you know, I mean, that's not going to happen, right? So, it just seems to me like we're changing ordinances for a very bizarre circumstance, and that doesn't seem like the right way to go about it to me.
Vic?
The one thing I would note, members of the council, is that because we are drawing water from Lake Michigan, we are subject to maintaining a minimal amount of unallocated flow. One of the sources of unallocated flow is the dross of water between our main and where the meter is. So, we have tried, I think, in the more recent years, to keep the meters as close to the water main as possible, so that the point at which we're reading it is, has less intervening service line, and so we have less resulting unallocated flow. So, the reason why we wouldn't necessarily prefer to have simply a meter in the house is because that means we have the entire service line that may be leaking at some point, and we don't have any way of capturing that.
May I make a suggestion, though? I think, Alderman, you raised a good point that unfortunately, I think none of the staff here can answer, which is, why didn't we put a one-and-a-half-inch meter between the hydrant and the house? And I think we can find that out. Tonight, this ordinance is only on for first reading, and so before it comes back to you for second reading, we will discuss with the plumbing inspector, find out why the plans that were submitted by the homeowner and approved by the city included that six-inch meter, and we don't want to unnecessarily adopt an ordinance for an aberration, but I think what we want to make sure happens, and we were actually trying to help the homeowner because with the system that was put in place, it was not fair and equitable to the homeowner in terms of the situation. But I think that we need to answer that question before second reading.
I hope we're going to refund whatever fees they paid on the six-inch meter retroactively. It'd be the fair thing to do.
The question has not come up, but we would be happy to chat with the homeowner about it.
Any other questions? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve first reading of an ordinance amending code section 51 point zero six zero relating to customer classes for water and sewer charges. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Okay.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, new business, review and update of the Eastside Train Station renovation project, presented by Mike Strong, Assistant to the City Manager. Good evening, Mike.
Great, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Purpose of our conversation this evening is a couple, twofold. One is to just inform you that work's going to be beginning on site, starting next week, for the exterior improvements, and then also wanted to just provide you an update on the interior improvements, which accommodate the last two stages of this, of this project. I'll run through a quick presentation here and then answer any questions that you may have. Just to recap some of the work that's been done out on the site, the roof was replaced in 2012, and then last year, we completed a parking lot resurfacing project along with the bike path reconstruction. The last two stages of work here include the exterior work, which will be starting next week for mobilization, and the interior work, which we're hoping to start in the fall of sixteen. Quickly to review sort of the scope for some of the exterior work, which will include some grinding in the masonry, re-tuckpointing, painting, it's a full-on restoration of the exterior of the facility. We're hoping to begin March fifteenth with mobilization, so include sort of the site preparation work, removal of some of the windows, which will be restored off-site, and then some of the other mobilization with our tuck pointers and painters. During construction, portions of our platform will be closed. We will need to sort of separate some work zones for the contractors to work within. We'll be phasing this, so at some point, we'll be closing off sort of half of the platform at a time. But the good news is, we aren't going to be shutting the depot down. This will remain open, restrooms, all the amenities, and tenants will be able to use and occupy the site throughout the construction. Additionally, there's no change in metro schedule or any of that sort. So, the impact is strictly going to be visual here. There will be some dust, but it won't be anything extravagant to sort of impact the regular commuter use of the station. There may be some parking impacted as a result of the construction, however. We will need staging for dumpsters, for some construction, equipment, staging of materials and so forth, but we'll try to minimize that the best we can to accommodate the commuters. Just a review of the quick schedule here, we did approve contracts with MAG Construction, just under 1.4 million, and then Gee Walt Hamilton is managing the construction phase of this project. So, rough estimates right now that we begin in March and hopefully complete this stage of the project in August. So, we are on track on those, those two dates. Shifting to the interior improvements, one of the things we wanted to present, council, was sort of some feedback we've gotten on a recent survey. Couple of questions on that survey that I wanted to highlight briefly this evening were, we asked the opinion that individuals had or commuters had of the station, and some of the feedback we got were that the restrooms, the taxi cab availability, and the upkeep and maintenance were more often than not reported as being fair or poor conditions. And you can see some of the other feedback we've gotten there. A second question that we asked was, you know, when looking at some of the interior improvements or the improvements onto the site, what would you prioritize? And looking at sort of the scale of one being most important, four being the least. We did find that the amenities, expansion of the restrooms, and commuter services did rank highly, but you see, there's not much distribution between some of these averages. So, it was just good feedback for us to kind of help guide, which would be the interior phase of this, of this project, and help kind of reiterate some of the goals we have as city staff in that aspect of the, of the project. Looking at the feasibility design, we did engage Leggett Architects in conjunction with Alfred Benish. You recall, there was some monies that were allowed for some of the feasibility design. We do have a preliminary site plan for the interior improvements, and here, notice a few things. We are looking at some expansion of the restroom facilities. This would actually be a relocation from the two stalls to a male and a female with multiple fixtures, and then relocating those to a larger space to the south. In addition, there's some interior demo work that would happen here where the existing restrooms are located. The purpose of this is really to kind of open the space up, to add a little bit more seating and a little bit more sort of space and comfort for that area. There's several other notes in here. You'll see some of the hatched pattern here, new tiling. We'll also be looking at rough plumbing for fire suppression, of course, some other ADA accessibility upgrades, some mechanical improvements to the systems, the HVACs in the facility, as well as looking at some, some other minor electrical work. At this point in time, aside from the HVAC and the fire suppression, there's no work planned for the tenant space to the north. That will remain largely unchanged throughout these, these improvements. At this point, we don't have solid numbers on the costs for this stage of the project. However, funds that are remaining from the grant will be used for the interior portion of this project. We don't, and I got, that is subject to change based on how the exterior improvements go, but right now, we're estimating, you know, between three and 350,000 remaining in the grant to be used to offset some of these costs. We won't have funding, most likely based on our initial cost estimates, to do all of these improvements, but we'll certainly make sure that those, that we do have the availability to do, will bid and then seek alternate bids for other work in case further grant money is made available after the exterior improvements. Getting into the schedule here, wanted to bring council up to speed. This past January, city staff received information about a delay at IDOT concerning the processing of our local agency and consultant agreements. We did submit those to the Lake County Department of Transportation. However, there was a delay in them processing them at Central and then getting them to, or District One, rather, in Schaumburg, and then getting them to Central. Once we were made aware of the situation, we did meet with those representatives. We have been given a, sort of a preliminary concurrence on those agreements, but currently they're, we're awaiting the executed contracts. So, they're down in Springfield. We're waiting for signatures, and what we're going to do to try to help speed up this side of it is, as soon as we're notified that they've been signed, we'll be issuing a notice to proceed to Alfred Benish and Leggett to continue in the pre-final design process, which are what these agreements are, are for. So, per the grant requirements, unfortunately, we are sort of obligated to run through the process of having the agreements approved, having them submitted for concurrence to IDOT, and then having them be executed at Central, which is a process that can take up to 14 weeks. So, unfortunately, that delay has caused our initial estimates, our current estimates for construction completion, from a November-ish, end of November timeframe, to beginning of the first of the, of first of the year. So, again, we'll continue to be vigilant here moving forward, and Lake County Department of Transportation and the District One office has indicated that, to the extent we can move these future processes forward, we'll continue to do so. So, that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, council has it this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mike?
Quick question. With the delays into the winter of next year, the interior will be available throughout, throughout that, that fourth quarter, first quarter, 2017?
Correct. We have, our assumption for the whole project has been that we do not want to shut this depot down. It's a major thoroughfare for commuters, and one of the, I guess, the advantages of looking at this site plan is currently, there is a tenant that's occupying this space. We would be able to keep the entire site open without any impact during construction if, if this site plan is ultimately what's sort of moved forward. So, there is some benefit there, but to answer your question, we have no plans to shut the depot down. We will keep it open, and I think Metro and Union Pacific would prefer that approach as well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, Mike, very much. Next item on the agenda, Telegraph Metro Station Pedestrian Underpass Project Update, presented by Robert Els, Superintendent of Engineering.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me just start off by saying, Michael had the easy one. Tonight, I am here to give you an update on the project. It's been quite some time. A lot has happened in the last year, year and a half, and I'm also here to address the two council action items that are on, in your agenda tonight concerning this project. As a bit of history, the concept for this project began back around 2010, and the idea was twofold. The first being to improve safety at the station for pedestrians. The other was to help attract an Amtrak stop at the Telegraph Metro Station, and doing that by eliminating the at-grade pedestrian process that exists out there today. This is an overview of the area we're talking about. This is the train station here, and unless you want to walk all the way down to Everett or all the way up to Conway, the only way to cross from one platform to the other is right there in the middle, there is an at-grade unprotected pedestrian crossing. During the design phase of this project, I'm sorry, in 2012, the city entered in with a Phase One design contract with HDR Engineering to provide preliminary engineering for this, and during that process, eight alternatives were produced. Those were brought to city council, and this is the alternative for this project that was selected by council. It became known as the Boll Concept because it would require the excavation of this whole area south of the station. As you can see, the red lines show two paths here. One is a direct pathway to the tunnel using stairs, and stairs on the other side and up. The dash line shows the route using ADA-compliant ramps to get down to the tunnel and then back It's worth noting that one of the options in the eighth that was presented by HDR was for a train bridge option, which requires an actual cutting of the, the track area. It means there would be interruption, limited interruption to train schedules in that area. That option was not supported by Metro or any of the subordinate railroads out there, so that option had no support, which means they would never have approved that option. So, this is the option, again, that was selected. This is a perspective of that. You can see where the Boll name came from. Here, these are, it's about a 17-foot retaining wall. Across here, this is just a section right through the middle. You see, there are stairs, there are access ramps to get down to a tunnel to get you to the other side. Obviously, you can go either way, bi-directional. The construction method to, to construct this tunnel is basically what they call a jack-and-bore operation. It's pushing and boring, in this case, a 14-foot steel casing underneath the active tracks. There would be no interruption to train service. It's about a 94-foot-long steel casing that was proposed. This is a representation of what this project would look like. This is actually Lombard, Illinois. Metro finished an underpass there not long ago. This is kind of a rendering. I'm not sure if this is the actual finished product, or it was a design rendering, but this would be the, the tunnel going under the active Metro tracks. This photo here shows a jack-and-bore operation. You can, under a railroad, you can see there is an active, there's a train up above here on the tracks, and they are jacking or pushing the steel casing under the tracks, and then the bore machine goes in and removes the soil from inside of the steel casing. This looks to be about a 10-foot diameter. It's the only picture I could find, but ours would be larger, it would be a 14-foot diameter casing. It's important to note at this point that when the Phase One design was completed by HDR in 2013, their estimate for this construction at the end of preliminary design was $5 million. That was based on some assumptions. When they got into, the same company was hired to do Phase Two detailed design. When the start of, during the start of the Phase Two detailed design, they did all of the geotechnical investigations, soil borings, test soil testing, and unfortunately, it was found that very poor soil conditions exist out there. And the anticipated method of, for the structure of those 17-foot retaining walls was basically sheet pilings with tiebacks. That's what- That's what was anticipated to be used. The soil conditions mandated that that be changed to a different structural system using hundreds of drilled shafts to hold that up. They had found out that the tiebacks for the sheeting under the original method would have to be like a quarter of a mile long, which obviously not practical. So when the Phase Two Design was wrapping up the, the final engineering, the cost estimate for this project had basically doubled to about almost $12 million to construct this. When you add in some miscellaneous costs and Phase Three Construction Engineering, the price tag was at $13 million. At that po, at that point, staff was and still is actively pursuing funding options, grant options, but to date, we have not been successful in raising $13 million. During the, the final design, there were some people and on Metro that questioned the $13 million estimate, questioned the scope of the project. It was suggested that the city evaluate that, which we did. We hired a third-party consultant, Hanson Engineering. They went in and did an independent review of the HDR cost estimate and found that the accurate, or that estimate was, in fact, very accurate based on current market prices for that type of work. To note, when, at the same time HDR was doing the final cost estimate, that picture I showed you of the Lombard Underpass, that project had just gone out to bid. So the information from the Lombard bids was used in preparing that. So during that study, that value engineering study that Hanson did, they also concluded that the scope of the work was right on, nothing was gold-plated, there weren't any, really anything you could take out of that estimate for that bowl option that the city asked them to design. Part, as another part of that, we asked them to look at some value engineering, how could this project be done, and bring the cost down. They concluded that the most cost-efficient way to build this would be using a train bridge option, which was the option that the railroads denied us using in the first place because it does involve disruptions to their train service. This is a representative picture of what a train bridge construction looks like. This, I believe, is Western Springs Station. And basically, instead of trying to get that tunnel, or that casing pushed under there, what happens is sheet piling is put in the center between the two tracks and also along one side. That track is taken out of service for a agreed about, agreed-upon amount of time, very temporary, it could be a Saturday, it may take two Saturdays to do, or three to do one side. The abutments are installed, precast beams are put in, and a precast deck is installed. Once that's in, the same process happens for the other side. That track's put back into service, they go ahead and do the same thing, take the other side out of service, go ahead and do this installation while that side is out of service for a predetermined amount of time, scheduled outages. If you've been to Ravinia, that's what was done at Ravinia. I don't remember three or four years ago, they went in and put in a train bridge, that's exactly what that is. So it was, at this time, the city went back in December and talked with Metro again. Mr. Kylie made the point that at $13 million, you know, that price tag may not only just preclude the city of Lake Forest from being able to find funding to construct an underpass like this, but it'd also make, preclude other government units and even Metro from being able to go forward in the future with this kind of a project with the prices going so high. So we had asked, is there any way we could relook at the decision not to allow train bridge construction? At that time, they didn't throw us out right away, so that was good. They did say, however, they would need a lot of detailed information before the, they would ever agree to going forward with this. They would need to know, have the data on exactly what those outages would look like, duration, how many days, and things like that. They're also wanted to know what the, the overall layout, how it would change from the underpass project. So to that end, the city received a proposal from Hanson Engineering to go ahead and do that, to do a train bridge concept study for the city, to come up with a layout of what a train bridge would look like there, to come up with a cost estimate, compare that to the underpass estimate, and to provide as much detailed information at that stage of design on what the impacts would be to rail operations for Metro and the subordinate railroads on that line. That is one of the items that's in your packet for approval tonight, so not to exceed $100,000. The city has gotten permission from IDOT to use existing state grant money to pay for 100% of that study, but the way it works, we would have to write the check upfront and get reimbursed, so that's why we need your approval, even though we would be reimbursed, we need that approval in order to pay that upfront.
Bob, do you, could, do you know offhand how much the Ravinia Bridge cost, the whole project?
Ravidia was around the $6 million, I don't have the exact number. Anybody else, is Norm here?
I would say it was five, but five to six.
Yeah, it was right in that neighborhood to do. Now, they may, because of elevation, grade changes there, very different than the south side of the our station, there may be a lot more excavation still required, and ours in retaining walls required than what they had there. Part of that study, they're also going to look at whether it would be better suited for the north side of the station, that's another issue they're going to look at.
Alderman, the only thing I would add to Bob's presentation is, when we originally went to Metro and talked about this concept of, why can't we do just what Ravinia did, keep in mind that this is on the UP North Line, which is just Metro trains, and so particularly on the weekend, it was much easier for them to take one of the two tracks out of service for a two, three-day, maybe a long weekend kind of a period of time, because it was really only affecting Metro's own trains. On the line that we're talking about with the Telegraph Road Station, you have not only the Metro trains, but you have freight and Amtrak as well. And so I think while our message to them about the cost being cost prohibitive certainly resonated, I think they need more details because it isn't just a Metro decision, it's going to have impacts on Amtrak and the freight service as well. And in the audience, Norm Carlson from the Metro Board is here, and he could probably articulate Metro's position much better than I, but I think that's why, at least initially, when we talked to them about five years ago, they were very reluctant to consider any option that would to, that would take one of the rail lines out of service.
And just to clarify, once the train bridge concept study was done, I think there, you know, that would give some information to Metro to look at, how that affects their operations, pass that on to the other railroads. It's not been, you know, it's not in stone that, that they would be able to make that decision at that point yet, as soon as that done, they may, it, they would certainly, if they told us, there's no way we're going to, we would ever approve that based on what Hanson came up, we would have to look at other options, but they may, it may be into a Phase One Design or further before they would be able to sign off on that, but at least this would keep us moving in the right direction. The last thing I have is that the other action item you have tonight is the approval of supplemental design fees for HDR Engineering. As I described, there was a real big change in the method of structural design for this during Phase Two Engineering. That increased the effort that HDR had to put in to complete that Phase Two Design. The Phase Two Proposal called for 30 plan sheets to be completed for that final design. They ended up producing 93 for that, and most of that are structural details based on the, the drilled shaft concept. The issue we had was that they unfortunately did not come to the city before they completed most of that work and request approval before they did work. So they kind of came to us in the last few weeks of the design process and said, by the way, with this big change, our effort, you know, we put a lot more work into this. So what we did was we sent, they filled out the supplemental paperwork, we sent it to the state, we sent it to IDOT, and told them, you know, they did work without prior approval. IDOT has since approved their request for supplemental and told us that it would be paid for at 100% out of the state grant fund. So it's the same as the Hanson Study, it wouldn't cost the city any money, but we would have to pay upfront and get reimbursed, that's why we're here asking for, for permission for both of those items, just so we have permission to initially cut those checks. At this point, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Bob?
Just a comment, it's nice to see that the state has so much money to throw around.
Depends on what pot it's in. This was money that was allocated to this project back in 2010 for design and work construction.
Michelle?
There's no question that we would receive 100% reimbursement, that's in writing?
We have that, yes, we have that in writing. We submitted project programming data, it's a form, state IDOT form, to them for both of these issues, and we received those back, approved by the state. So we have those on hand.
And Bob, what's the, excuse me, follow on, what's the time delay between the time we distribute, we pay the funds and the time we're reimbursed?
It takes, we have to wait until the work is done and the city pays them, because you have to submit a cancel check as a part of a lot of other paperwork to get your reimbursement. So as soon as the work is done, takes, you know, a couple of weeks, and then the city has access to that cancel check. We send it in, and then it's usually around 45 days at that point before we get our money back.
Thank you.
A quickie question, or hopefully you can give me the short answer, and I don't
mean to sidetrack. I'm just curious, is ADA compliant, extensive amount of ramps going down, I'm curious what the grade is, and can a wheelchair-bound person, a bona fide paraplegic, can they maneuver a wheelchair down that?
Yes.
And back up it by hand, or do they need a motorized wheelchair? And then, I've never seen anybody ride the train in a wheelchair, maybe Norm can answer this. How do they transfer from station grade up into a train car?
That, Norm, would have to answer, yes, the, all those ramps were designed to be below the maximum slope allowed by federal ADA guidelines, so they'll all be below 5% grade. It's a long way, but those are the federal standards that have been worked out that people can maneuver on.
Curious how it works.
Norm, any comments?
I'm sorry?
Comments?
Comments, yes. I'll answer the question first. At each car, there is a device that slides out, drops down to the platform level, the person in the wheelchair comes up onto the plat, up onto the platform, it then raises up to the level of the car, the person rolls into the car, the ramp retracts into the doorway.
Every car's got that.
Every car.
I've never seen it.
And every one of the newer cars, I'm sorry, on this line, we almost have 100%. BNSF, with some of the older cars, they don't have it on every car. But every train has ADA capability to lift passengers.
Oh, okay.
We have a regular passenger at Deerfield, and we have another regular passenger at Northbrook that I'm aware of.
What does it cost, what does it cost to retrofit a car like that?
Heck, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's built into all of the new cars, and we have a substantial number of new cars on the railroad, and we are retrofitting them into some of the other cars. The, the retrofits in total are about $300,000 to $600,000, depending on the age of the car, but we have a, we have a full program that's going in.
So when they know they have a handicapped person, they have to allow more time for that stop, right?
No.
Really?
No, because there are not that many handicap riders, but we do know where there are certain trains where they do ride regularly, and the crews have become extremely efficient in doing this operation. But if you notice a stop that's a little bit longer than usual, that's probably what's going on.
Okay.
And I've seen some cases where they've had to double-stop the train out on this line because they've actually taken the passenger onto a grade crossing and lifted him off the street. But we do it every day. One thing I would like to emphasize, and Bob made the point, this line, the Milwaukee North Line, is the most difficult line to operate of the 11 lines that Metro operates on. It only has two tracks, and it has between, on deer, on weekdays, between Deerfield and Northbrook, there's 100 trains a day on the two tracks. On the weekends, between 2:50 and 4:10, there are six passenger trains. That's one of the problems in shutting the railroad down. And while there is reference in here to having an MOU, we may have to do that MOU in a couple of steps, because I'm going to tell you, there's going to be a real negotiation with Canadian Pacific about interrupting their freight trains. But we have the commitment, the verbal commitment from Don Orsino, our CEO, and Pete Zofler, our Chief Operating Officer, Deputy Executive Director, Chief Operating Officer, that they will work with the city on this, because we are interested in eliminating wherever we can, but mid-platform pedestrian crossings. And the thing I wish to emphasize is, our track record for fatalities is not good. So we are quite interested in Metro as a whole, and the commitment also of our chairman, Marty Oberman, that we want to see what we can do to make this work. The one thing that is not mentioned in here, which I hope is just, may sound like a detail, but it's critical to Metro's participation, is that we, our chief engineering officer is insisting that this project use Metro's project management and cost control procedures. We ask this of all the construction companies we work with on all of the, on all the projects, there are standard forms that are involved in this, and quite frankly, my own personal opinion is, I think we would want it ourselves so that we have some project control on this, which quite frankly, we did not have in going forward up to this point. So I would hope that you would consider that, Bob.
We certainly will, Norm. The only thing to remember is that this project, with the money we have for design right now, is controlled by IDOT, controlled by the state. They too have their own project formulas and paperwork and processes.
Yeah.
If we receive a federal grant, which is the, the hope for what we need to do the construction, that will fall under the same IDOT. So we'll have to work together, we'll have to see what similarities we have and how we can maybe, I don't know, bring some of your requirements in, but in the end, the official paperwork will have to be IDOT paperwork, but I think we can work together and make it, make it work for it.
And we use this same process in other IDOT projects and other federal projects as well. And I'm glad you said that, because it triggered something in my mind. There are 14 trains a day during the week, and on Sunday, there are 12 trains a day that operate between Union Station and Milwaukee. These trains are funded 75% by WISDOT and 25% by IDOT. So in the coordination process, even though Amtrak operates the trains, we are going to have to bring WISDOT and IDOT into the process so that they are part of this negotiation of saying, okay, we're going to put maintenance windows out there. So it, I cannot underestimate the contribution that Metro will be making in allowing this to happen on this line. Bob mentioned on the other, on the east line, as we call it here in town, the Union Pacific line, there are very few trains on the weekend, relatively speaking. On the project on the BNSF in Western Springs, right? That's a three-track railroad, so there were still two tracks open, and there's a tremendous number of crossovers on that railroad to move trains between the tracks. And last year or the year before, they put one of these bridge structures in in Wheaton on the Union Pacific, and before they put the bridge structure in, they built additional crossovers. So that they could, and that's a three-track railroad as well. So we're breaking precedent here in having a two-track railroad with the amount of traffic we have on this railroad, even during the weekends, and again, that's why I'm underestimating. It was a lot of work on everybody's part here. It was a lot of work on everybody's part here, and a real commitment from Metra to make this work. So those are my comments.
Thanks, Norm, very much. Any other questions for Norm?
I have a question. It sounds like, I mean, in the beginning, when I was talking, and I realized how long this has been going on, I was a little discouraged, but you're talking like you're pretty sure this is going to happen in some timeframe.
Yes, and I'll tell you, what happened is, we have an outstanding CEO at Metra. His name is Don Orsino. And hopefully, you're going to meet him someday. The prior management is, and they're gone, as Bob pointed out, took a very hard line. And the hard line they took was simply no maintenance windows. There was anything, there was nothing downstream from that, it was simply no maintenance windows. The other thing that happened is, the Canadian Pacific came in and said, we're not going to let you even stop the Amtrak trains. We control this railroad. Well, somebody comes on the Metra Board, and he said, who owns this railroad? Metra owns the railroad. So we asked general counsel, does Canadian Pacific have the rights to do this? And the answer was, no, they don't have the rights to do this. So these are the two major things that have happened, is, one, we have a management that says, we are interested, truly interested in safety, and we want to make this happen, and that's basically Don Orsino and Pete Zofler. And two, we have told the Canadian Pacific, who owns the railroad? Who controls the railroad? Now, they happen to dispatch the railroad, but that doesn't mean that they control the railroad.
Good. Well, it's hopeful.
Any other questions for Norm?
Not for, not for Norm, but I've got questions. I do, because I've, I've been on the council now for five years, almost since the inception of this. And from the get-go, I've been in favor of it for a couple of reasons, safety, and I also thought it would be fantastic to have an Amtrak stop to take us right to Mitchell Field, to provide our residents with some options in airline travel. But the expenses have gotten out of control, and the logistical obstacles have grown, grown exponentially. And there's so many hurdles to overcome. We're splitting the cost 20-80, certain aspects of it. Where are we? How much of our, what's a dollar amount of the 20% that we've spent on this so far?
We've spent $208,000 for Phase One, under the federal funding rules for projects. You have to have Phase One design completed before you're eligible to apply for grant funds for final design and for construction funds. So the city's 208,000 for Phase One design. Our city cost for Phase Two design was zero. So yes, to the, we did spend $19,000 for the value engineering study, so $228,000 to date.
So how much could we be into this for the city's share when all's said and done? One day, I'll be off this council when this is done. How much will we be into it for?
It's, it's hard to say. Right now, the money that we have, the state money, that we would use for the two items you have in front of you tonight, and then if we were to eventually be able to go into Phase One, Phase Two design, the money we have set aside is state money, which means it's 100% money. It's not 80-20 federal money. Going forward, I would anticipate construction funds, though, once we are successful in finding a program where we can get those from, would be federal funds, so it would be 80-20 money. So if it's a $10 million project, there's a $2 million deficit for local agency. We would certainly ask other people to contribute to that. We would seek other matching funds for that. But it's hard to say at this point. We don't know what the final cost would be if we go over to a different, totally different design, and we don't know what kind of money and what that would look like.
That's why, Alderman, I think we've been aggressively looking at what the alternative is, because even at an 80-20 on a $12 million project, you know, that's 2.5 million dollars, and if we can get that down to 600,000, then we're down to 1.2 million.
I, I'm just concerned, I've spent some time with Norm and so have you, Kathy, and I think we even met Don Orsino, right?
And Marty.
And, and Marty Oberman. And it's, just keeps escalating out of control. It's, if you read the book, The Martian, which had a lot more detail in it than the movie did, you see what enormous odds he was up against. And I feel, I'm, I'm becoming overwhelmed with this project. And if we spend all this money and it doesn't come to fruition, it's, that would be shameful. We're never going to stop the suicides. So from a safety standpoint, yeah, we're, hopefully, an underpass would prevent an accidental fatality. We'll never stop suicides with an underpass. And half of our fatalities, I think, have been self-inflicted. And if there were any other way to get a Metra stop, I'd say, the heck with the underpass. That's kind of how I feel. I mean, that was half of the attraction to me, was, was getting Amtrak.
Mike, I will tell you, we've threw a lot of people's help, not a little bit from Norm and others.
A lot of help from Norm, I know that.
Yeah, very much so. We are making what we think is very good progress on that particular topic, and believe that the end could be in sight there. And we have spent a great deal of time looking for and working with elected officials, both state and national, in assisting, trying to find some funding opportunities. I've met with Congressman Dole three times in the last six weeks, and he's doing a great deal to help us with that, as, as are others, and certainly, Norm is actively involved in that as well. So we're not giving up on this one, but I think we are encouraged with the preliminary feedback we're getting about the Amtrak stop.
Okay, well, I don't want to put Norm on the spot, but without holding you to it, in right now, what, what would you venture is a probability that this will come to pass?
Well, I, I think we're well north of 50%. It's going to come down to the dollars. And, and the bridge concept is an attempt to have a significant decrease in the dollars of the construction, in the construction. So I think that, I think that the process is in place for this thing to go forward, other than the dollars, and I, you know, and Bob, I know, is working very hard on that. So that is the contingent, the major contingency I see at this point, Mike.
Okay.
Mike, the other thing is, I mean, we, you've been involved in this a lot longer than I have, but this is a real crisis situation in terms of, I agree with you. I mean, our deaths there are not, are not all accidental, but there are some accidental deaths out there. We know it's not safe. We know there will be more. I think it's safe to say there will be more. And so if we haven't given this our absolute best shot, and I think Mayor John Hunter has really been pushing on that, I mean, we've got to do our best to see. I agree, the numbers, you know, clearly, we're going to have to get, the numbers have to work. But putting some money into it to try to figure it out, to me, is very justifiable. And I think it sounds like we're going to get there. It, it may take longer than anybody wants us to, but, but hopefully, we will. And I think in the end, we'll have to have federal support for the build-out, but let's, I, I don't think we should give up. I mean, I'm heartened that, that there, progress has been made, and we know it's a very urgent need.
Well, there's, there's a little bit of a intangible here as well, is that Hanson has a pretty good track record of working with Metra. So whatever that's worth, you know, I'll, I'll throw that out, that they have a good track record with, with working with Metra. They also have a good track record in working with IDOT, you know, they, because they're headquartered in Springfield. So I mean, we have a few intangibles here that hopefully will bear some fruit as well.
And I'm not suggesting we don't approve what's before us on the agenda tonight. All I'm saying is that we have to keep our eyes open, and it, there might become an appropriate point in time where we bail and cut our losses.
Right. The part I get uncomfortable with is all the agencies involved, and they all have their internal bureaucracies, that trying to get them all lined up seems like a very daunting task to me. I've heard tonight, WISDOT, IDOT, Metra, freight companies.
Amtrak.
There's a lot of interests on that line that are all competing for track space. And as Norm says, it's, it's one of the more difficult lines to run, because it's limited to two tracks. I mean, that concerns me. I don't have a problem with tonight's vote, because these monies are reimbursable, and we have that in writing, but I agree with you, Mike, at some point, we've got to stay on top of this.
Well, that's why I brought up the point, that we want, Metra, engineering officer is very emphatic that the cost control and project control practices of Metra that are used with IDOT and everybody else in the feds be put in place.
Well, there's probably. I, I think we have a long evening ahead of us. May I suggest we move on?
That's fine. Any other questions?
No.
I need a motion to approve the payment of $195,375.75 to HDR Incorporated in accordance with the revised local agency agreement received from IDOT, and for which the city will be reimbursed 100%. And I need a motion to allow the mayor and the city manager to enter into agreements with Hanson Engineering and IDOT for the completion of a train bridge concept study for an amount not to exceed $100,000. This amount also will be reimbursed to the city by the state under the existing grant agreement. Do I have a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Betty. Next item on the agenda is additional items for council discussion. Need a motion for the council to adjourn into executive session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C6, and the city council will be discussing consideration of the sale or lease of property owned by the public body. I need a motion for, to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I need a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
And for those of you here, and for those of you watching at home, when we adjourn out of executive session into regular session, we will simply end the meeting at that point, so we will not convene back into open session. All right? Thank you.